All right, good evening. Um, that's working. Uh, welcome to the Lincoln City Council regular meeting agenda for July twenty eighth, twenty fifteen. Mayor Coro.
Mayor Keaton.
Here.
Mr. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Ms. Warren.
Here.
Ms. Barb.
Here.
All right, as I can remind everybody, please turn their cell phones off. I'll double check on them. All right, um, first item on the news, invitation to place the latest, Councilman Pearson, do you have any information? Please say yes. All right, first item on the agenda is approved of minutes for July fourteenth, twenty fifteen. The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of July fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
All right, if there's a motion in a second, any discussion, change of positions or relations. Here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, next item is approved of minutes of July twenty first, twenty fifteen. The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve the minutes of July twenty first, two thousand and fifteen.
All right, any changes or additions or additions? And I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to place communications on the audience for orders and resolutions.
I say. All right, there's been a motion to amend the agenda, discussion. Here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, so we're moving to the dead item in front, communication from the audience. Uh, first item, person on the agenda is Pete Gater, progress at Lincoln. Okay.
Mayor, it's council. I come to you today, this may be a reply or maybe a rebuttal to this flyer by Lincoln Live. Growth for the last forty-four years in Lincoln involved five thousand one hundred ninety-nine people coming into Lincoln, a four hundred and sixty-one percent increase. Between nineteen seventy and four hundred, built, the population grew by three hundred and six percent. Between the time hundred built in two thousand and ten, the population grew by thirty-seven percent. This tells you that vast majority of Lincoln's progress, last forty-four years, has been caused by interstate and highway. All right, ten point four percent growth per year, average over the last forty-four years. A hundred and fifteen per year between nineteen seventy, this is residence, and two thousand, thirteen point five percent per year on average. One hundred and sixty-nine per year between two thousand and two thousand and ten, three point seven per year average increase. But here's something a little different. Between two thousand and ten, two thousand and fourteen, fourteen per year, were zero point two four percent year average, less than one quarter percent for the last four years, per year. With a zero point two four percent average growth per year over the next forty-four years, growth increased by six hundred and sixty residents. Of course, not all of us will know, nor see that problem, but most of us anyway. Also here is that Lincoln High School drew middle of Lincoln Avenue, Tellman. Our Tylerwick County Schools own by the citizens of Tylerwick County for the education of the children of North Tylerwick County, which Lincoln is fortunate enough to be a part of. As well noted at the last council meeting, Lincoln's overworked police force cannot provide anywhere near adequate traffic control for these schools. Also note that all Drewville and Lincoln High School students, south of Chalklock Creek to just south of Stanley Ridge Road, already zoned with these schools, is not a matter of choice. Have you called your local realtor about buying or renting Lincoln Land? Lincoln Harbor is without a doubt, one of the largest economic plots in the history of Tylerwick County, with properties selling for pennies on the dollar. Not everyone in the area, non-contigious, are contiguous, as noted by you, Mr. Mayor, in Sunday's paper, wanted in, some opted out. When someone is asked to be taken out of the city limits, the council is refused. Myself, and I think it would be safe to say this is our house of votes, but not everyone in the audience, we have not spoken to one citizen of the city of Lincoln that feels that this act of taxation without representation is the right thing to do, considering the long-term impact it's going to have on Lincoln.
Your three minutes is expired.
Next one?
Your three minutes is expired.
About three minutes.
Is it the same, the same thing?
I'll be back next day.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. A request by council member, Member Pearson, to take your name and your address, he come forward. Um, next item on the agenda is James Goss. Goss, are you here?
My name is James Goss. I live at two thirty-two Brick at Ben Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Citizens of Lincoln did not request ten million dollars for a revenue budget, and they surely did not force you to expand Lincoln's police jurisdiction. That was your visions. The pretense of this mayor and council is that they own the city of Lincoln and answer to no one. Since November the fifth, twenty twelve, this mayor has been making decisions that have serious consequences for the people of Lincoln. Expanding police jurisdiction by six hundred percent on the sole word of this mayor and council, without permitting Lincoln citizens to vote on this most important issue, is a big mistake. Something directly affecting Lincoln citizens, and this mayor does not involve Lincoln citizens. However, allowing citizens to vote would have brought everything out in the open, and that would not go well with this mayor's plan. Our communities have been providing Lincoln with vast amounts of city revenue for many years, synced with my shopping in Lincoln. This revenue sourced by itself should have been enough, Mr. Mayor, and you should be thanking county residents for choosing Lincoln. Instead, you're coming into these same faithful communities and demanding more revenue to help keep Lincoln's financial head above water. What financial shape would Lincoln be in today if thousands of your neighbors and county residents, being intruded on by you and this council, suddenly decide to bypass Lincoln altogether? Where do you think the bulk of your city business comes from? Lincoln needs city business from all of us, but we can easily find other cities for our business needs. If the expanded police jurisdiction remains in place, it's going to be extremely difficult for all of you in this city government to retain your status as mayor and council members. Although county residents have no voting privilege in your city, we do have in great numbers, and I stress great numbers, the ability to persuade and profoundly support other counties seeking your job. If Lincoln wants to be a big city, let the mayor of Lincoln pay for that city, not our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Goss, if I can add a personal invitation from me, I would like to ask you to come up and sit down with me, and let me explain some of the things that I think that you incorrectly stated, but I'll do that, and I might want to leave if you accept.
I have no counter.
Okay. Come on, please, please, Frank. Please. Wendell Stewart, next comment.
You had to start the clock while I was talking, did you, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If you'll let me know, I'll be glad to start when you're ready.
Bingo.
All right, forget it.
We have all heard of beating the same drum. As of the last meeting, this administration continues to limit us to three minutes, while most area commissions and councils allow five minutes and even ten if you need it. Almost all of them need more convenient times. Many allow citizens at work sessions as a standard practice, and even allow them to speak. Can you believe that? At a work session. As I said last time, ladies and gentlemen of council, you're supposed to serve the people, not dictate to them. An attitude of you and the audience, and the audience in your seat, would do wonders for everyone, including you. Instead, respectfully, not to be critical, but out of concern, it appears you continue misleading, misemploying, choreographed and controlled. As you know, there are about eleven thousand county residents, and they remain highly concerned. Lincoln is just over six thousand population. And I tell you what, for every concern you hear from your people, there's a hundred more that are concerned. You're risking the peace and security of your own people, and you've involved us in. We continue to wish you well. We'll quit coming to Lincoln with our concerns if you restore us completely permanent. From time to time, you've mentioned the city of Tuscaloosa versus Hope, as has been mentioned several, several times, with your reasoning or approval to do what you did. Well, here's the thing. Tuscaloosa, I lived there for eight years. I know every state and turn in that whole county. It now has a city of sixty-six miles. Lincoln is twenty-two. The hope which that case was based on is a city unincorporated of three point two miles. And you're wanting to take in over a hundred miles. The twenty fourteen budget, this just blows my mind, in Tuscaloosa was four hundred and seven million dollars. As you know, Lincoln was ten million. Has Lincoln managed this? No. Mr. Mayor, council, do you have any comments?
Thank you very much. Appreciate yours. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-one, transfer the cable television franchise to use the cable company to CAP Cable LLC. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, we, I make a motion to be transferred the cable television franchise to use the cable company to CAP Cable LLC.
I say. All right, there's been a motion, a second, any discussion?
And we, that was seven now?
Yes.
Okay, so the franchise agreement stays the same?
The franchise agreement pretty, pretty much stays the same with that. Now, one of the things that we'll ask of the new company is the performance goals to meet those. So, and I've had discussion with the county administrator, involves about what the county and their doing is, is well, and so, I, you know, I welcome the fact that we're getting a, a new company in here that wants to grow, wants to see expanded services, especially in the internet arena, as we know, not much change in the cable arena, but from the internet provider, they're probably my services greater than what we're getting today. Right, good. Any other discussion, any other questions? All right, here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, this was twenty fifteen, twenty-one passes. The next item on the agenda is authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental services agreement, which is how the county put the purchase order. Uh, open the floor for a motion, a second, and Ms. Lobb, you can address some of that as well. Do you have any questions? The floor is open for a motion.
So, yeah, motion to authorize you to execute intergovernmental services agreement for Tylerwick County for the purchase of water. A second.
Okay. Ms. Lobb, do you want? Yeah, you can come to the mic if you like. Hey, welcome to, so y'all, this is second trip here. Welcome to Tylerwick County.
Thank you. Enjoyed here, loving here. Um, what this agreement is, is during the construction of the Chalklock Creek Bridge, they'll be taking the utility, the wire utility out of service. The county has service south of the bridge on Stanley Road, and we have a meter, and what we're going to do is, three hundred and fifty of Lincoln's customers would be affected and would otherwise be without water, so the county is going to meter the water and sell it to the city of Lincoln at the published governmental rate, and, and Lincoln will retain, you know, keep its business relationship with its customers just like it has, and there will be no interruption in service. And that's, that's about it.
All right, anybody have any question, Ms. Lobb? Thank you so much.
There won't be price increases. There won't be price increase on their bill?
Uh, no price increase. No price increase.
Can you guarantee that?
Yeah. All right, I can personally guarantee it, but this council would have to mark out.
I'm not guaranteeing either.
Okay. I'd be glad to address that, since you brought it up, but this is not open discussion from the audience. This council would have to take up and pass an ordinance changing the.
Trade out. Certainly. I get water for our.
Could I ask you to please refrain?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, so it would come before this council, if there's a change, there is, if the rate that they're selling us our water, there's no reason to have any increase. They're giving, selling to us at a governmental rate. All right, so we go to, here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, the next item is to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Wilco Hess and improvements on State Right-of-Wake Seventy-Seven. Um, this is a agreement that we entered in with Wilco Hess, for Wilco to come, and that they would partner with us in doing their part of their work, which they're paying for, our part of our work, which we're paying for, and it's under one state contract to bid it out. It was a mutual benefit to both sides. Um, so this is, this council has discussed this on many occasions, and the Wilco Hess has signed their part of the agreement, and I'm asking the council to allow us to sign our side of the agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the Wilco Hess LLC for approval, Highway Seventy-Seven under the April question.
Excited for a motion.
Okay?
I'm going to get this going, yes.
Yes, this will actually make, make way for the start of construction for the, it's actually going to be a Speedway by label, but it's a wholly owned subsidiary of Speedway and Wilco Hess is, but that's allowing to continue right there across from the Waffle House, where they've been, um, stagnating for a period of time, as they, the companies that, they actually transferred ownership, that come on two different occasions, so. Any other questions?
So, is Wilco Hess back in the picture, or?
Well, it's, it's interesting that you should ask that, because I asked that same question, and reviewed that up through, through the legal of both, both companies. The purchase of Wilco Hess was done through a stock transfer, not, not through an acquisition, so it's still Wilco and Hess LLC subsidiary thereof, Marathon slash Speedway LLC. So, their legal name is still Wilco Hess, obviously, because Wilco Hess basically will, will not operate stores under their name after a period of three years after they transfer all the signs out. The legal entity that we, that we are contracting with is still Wilco Hess LLC. No further questions, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, the next item is the mayor to execute a contract with Wilco Hess LLC and South Hunt Partners, three, for utility improvements along Highway Seventy-Seven under community development block grant. Again, very much like our agreement with Wilco Hess, this includes also the South Hunt Partners who own the remainder of the three hundred and fifteen acres that's behind that, they are coming in and partnering in three-way deal to put, extend water and sewer and a lift station at the, at the location of the purpose of buying the water and sewer, not only to Speedway Station, but to the industrial property they're marketing behind that three hundred and fifteen acres and the acreage to the north of that, which is the Hinton Property, um, I think it's under Field Mart LLC, but that would give us the ability to have water and sewer on the east side of Highway Seventy-Seven, and the DECA has, has given us a grant, um, once everybody's signed off at this, to participate this, with this project, to help us with our part, the cost of that, South Hunt's contributing part of it, as well as Wilco Hess's contributing part is due. Okay, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to, uh, authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Wilco Hess LLC, South Hunt Partners, three, for utility improvements along Highway Seventy-Seven under a community development block grant. Again, very much like our agreement with Wilco Hess, this includes also the South Hunt Partners who own the remainder of the three hundred and fifteen acres that's behind that, they are coming in and partnering in three-way deal to put, extend water and sewer and a lift station at the, at the location of the purpose of buying the water and sewer, not only to Speedway Station, but to the industrial property they're marketing behind that three hundred and fifteen acres and the acreage to the north of that, which is the Hinton Property, um, I think it's under Field Mart LLC, but that would give us the ability to have water and sewer on the east side of Highway Seventy-Seven, and the DECA has, has given us a grant, um, once everybody's signed off at this, to participate this, with this project, to help us with our part, the cost of that, South Hunt's contributing part of it, as well as Wilco Hess's contributing part is due.
Okay, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to, uh, authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Wilco Hess LLC, South Hunt Partners, three, for utility improvements along Highway Seventy-Seven under a community development block grant.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Do they link to, to the opening structures, are they still part of utilities? Improving the utilities that they don't have plans for? Any stores, anything of that nature?
Other than, other than the Speedway gas station at this point, they don't have any other prospective people at this point, but what they're trying to do is make sure they have water and sewer available, so that they can begin to market that property for manufacturing, industrial, or commercial. Um, it's also zoned to the north of Blue Eye Peas, that is multi-family residential R3 under current designation, so there could also be some houses built, that will be part of that three hundred and thirty fifteen acres remaining. So, that gets us water and sewer on the, on that side of the, of the highway, and gives us some more marketable property from that standpoint. Any other questions? All right, here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, the next item on the agenda is approve the extension of the existing agreement between Christian Associates for the master planning and designing services for most of the park, and exceed additional thirty thousand, one dollar and eighty cents. That takes your total contract for two thousand to eleven fifty. I'll open the floor for a motion, a second, and we will open it for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the extension of existing agreement with Christian Associates for the master planning and designing services for most of the park.
I say. Okay. Um, and I think that we, we had this discussion at the work session, um, but the, the people that weren't there, um, we started this project with Christian Associates in twelve thousand and two forty, to develop a master plan, they brought the master plan to us, they presented a work session, the master plan, and exactly a, a full makeover of most of the park, building phases over, probably depending on the funding available over the next five to ten years, um, to do that, so we developed a master plan, and this is actually to fund phase one, which fills in and does the demolition of the, that this park phase one is the demolition of the, of the current structures that are there, building backup of, of the playground. We do have a grant to cover some of the playground equipment, some of the other things that we're doing in that, we're not talking about that, this is just the professional services part of this, but it's the survey and the civil engineering part of this, as well as the bid package and putting it out for bid, which will prove that in another future council meeting, the actual length of the bids at that time, or the pricing is, our actual pricing, and then there'll be another council action to actually award the bid if we choose to do so. This is just the professional services part of that. Any other discussion or questions? All right, here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, that passes. Uh, the next item on the agenda is amend the FY twenty fifteen budget, amount of forty five hundred dollars for the following budget category, the purchase of new uniforms, for the place of parking. She's ready, you want to speak to that?
I think most of y'all were, were in the work session when I presented it, from Ms. Warren, Ms. Pearson. They, I'd already intended on switching to the, more back to the old school, traditional police uniforms next year, but I've got officers now that need uniforms, and I've got a couple of slots that need to fill, and to keep from wasting the money buying the old uniforms. I want to go ahead and do them now, do it all at the time.
Okay, now let's discuss the work session. All right, the floor is open for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the FY two thousand and fifteen budget, amount of four hundred dollars for the following budget category, for the purchase of new uniforms and that police department.
I say. Any other discussion?
Do they link to, to the opening structures, are they still part of utilities? Improving the utilities that they don't have plans for? Any stores, anything of that nature?
Other than, other than the Speedway gas station at this point, they don't have any other prospective people at this point, but what they're trying to do is make sure they have water and sewer available, so that they can begin to market that property for manufacturing, industrial, or commercial. Um, it's also zoned to the north of, of Blue Eye Peas, that is multifamily residential R3 under current designation, so there could also be some houses built, that will be part of that three hundred and thirty fifteen acres remaining. So, that gets us water and sewer on the, on that side of the, of the highway, and gives us some more marketable property from that standpoint. Any other questions? All right, here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, the next item on the agenda is approve the extension of the existing agreement between Christian Associates for the master planning and designing services for most of the park, and exceed additional thirty thousand, one dollar and eighty cents. That takes your total contract for two thousand to eleven fifty. I'll open the floor for a motion, a second, and we will open it for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the extension of existing agreement with Christian Associates for the master planning and designing services for most of the park.
I say. Okay. Um, and I think that we, we had this discussion at the work session, um, but the, the people that weren't there, um, we started this project with Christian Associates in twelve thousand and two forty, to develop a master plan, they brought the master plan to us, they presented a work session, the master plan, and exactly a, a full makeover of most of the park, building phases over, probably depending on the funding available over the next five to ten years, um, to do that, so we developed a master plan, and this is actually to fund phase one, which fills in and does the demolition of the, that this park phase one is the demolition of the, of the current structures that are there, building backup of, of the playground. We do have a grant to cover some of the playground equipment, some of the other things that we're doing in that, we're not talking about that, this is just the professional services part of this, but it's the survey and the civil engineering part of this, as well as the fit package and putting it out for bid, which will prove that in another future council meeting, the actual length of the bids at that time, or the pricing is, our actual pricing, and then there'll be another council action to actually award the bid if we choose to do so. This is just the professional services part of that. Any other discussion or questions? All right, here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, that passes. Uh, the next item on the agenda is amend the FY twenty fifteen budget, amount of forty five hundred dollars for the following budget category, for the purchase of new uniforms and that police department. I say. Any other discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say yes. I was opposed. All right, reports from staff members, and others, a couple of them were delivered up here. Anybody have? Ms. Thompson?
Um, I just wanted to make sure that publicly, I thank East Bubba Baptist Youth for coming out and helping at the seniors center, as well as at England Park, Blue Eye Trail, they did some clearing, some painting, and we just appreciate the youth coming out, they wanted to give back to the communities, they participated in with sports and all, so I just wanted to thank them, as well as Captain Vincent for coming out today and working with us with fire extinguishers, making sure that we were all knowledgeable of how to use one. First of all, they have a key to one, so I'll go thank him, and the fire department, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Barbara, you have a report?
Yes.
All right, um, my report is just to tell you just briefly that we had a bid open on
Fire Station Number Two today. Um, we, we did have three bidders out of the six that asked for plans. Um, there is an apparent low bidder, what appears to be, you know, in the manufacturing process, is an apparent low bidder until the, the architect goes through the entire bidding of those bids, but it does appear that the bids, all three bids were very, very close together, and they all three came within the budget that we presented to the, to the council, so, um, I'll be getting back with each of the council members, if you can give me that apparent low bid when it comes in from the architect, the certified tabulation sheet, and then we can take that up at, at a, at a coming meeting. Um, the only other comment I want to say was, I want to say thank you to those, some of you are in this audience, some of you tonight, but I wanted to say, from my entire family, my, my appreciation and the sympathies, and, and the sweet notes that was sent to me, about them passing my mother, very, very touching, and I want to say thank you for that, and, um, sorry I couldn't be at the last council meeting, but, um, but I spoke with my three sisters, and they certainly appreciate all the notice and not share within that, so. Um, all right, next item is to, by the, uh, council reports, who wants to start?
I have anything to say? All right. Okay, I do. Uh, we have an issue at the park on First Avenue. I was in conference with, uh, Rob, and then she made me aware of some things that were going on down there, and I went down today, this afternoon, and while I was down there, two cars pulled up and they transacted, there's a drug deal, well, it wasn't going to always be a drug, it was, whatever, it was, came out, it smelled like drugs, but anyway, we have a big issue with them taking over, and from the neighbors that I talked to in the community near there, uh, they said some uncle, and they, that it's just every day of summer, that they're down there, and the children, even the parks fall, and I abused them, because these older guys come down and, um, they use profanity, and while we were down there, while I was down there, I saw set gumnos over.
This is an agreement that we entered in with Wilco Hess for Wilco to come, and they would partner with us in doing their part of their work, which they're paying for, our part of our work, which we're paying for, and it's under one state contract to bid it out. It was a mutual benefit to both sides. So, this council has discussed this on many occasions, and the Wilco Hess has signed their part of the agreement. Now, I'm asking the council to allow us to sign our side of the agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the Wilco Hess LLC for improvements on Highway 77 under the April project.
Excited to hear that.
Okay.
I'm glad you have this going.
Yes, this will actually make way for the start of construction for the... It's actually going to be a Speedway by label, but it's a wholly owned subsidiary of Speedway that Wilco Hess is, but that's allowing it to continue right there across from the Waffle House where they've been stagnant for a period of time, as the companies have actually transferred ownership up coming on two different occasions, so... Any other questions?
So, is Wilco Hess back in the picture?
Well, it's interesting that you should ask that, because I asked that same question and reviewed that up through the legal of both companies. The purchase of Wilco Hess was done through a stock transfer, not through an acquisition. So, it's still Wilco Hess LLC subsidiary thereof of Marathon/Speedway LLC. So, their legal name is still Wilco Hess LLC, because Wilco Hess basically will not operate stores under their name after a period of three years after they transfer all the signs out. The legal entity that we are contracting with is still Wilco Hess LLC. No further questions, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, see if I would say aye. All opposed. All right, the next item is to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Wilco Hess LLC and South Hunt Partners III for utility improvements along Highway 77 under community development block grant. Again, very much like our agreement with Wilco Hess, this includes also the South Hunt Partners who own the remainder of the 315 acres that's behind that. They are coming in and partnering in three-way deal to put, to extend water and sewer and a lift station at the location of the purchase of water and sewer, not only to Speedway Station, but to the industrial property they're marketing behind that 315 acres and the acreage to the north of that, which is the Hinton property. I think it's under Fuel Mart LLC, but that would give us the ability to have water and sewer on the east side of Highway 77. And the DECA has given us a grant once everybody's signed off at this to participate this with this project to help us with our part of the cost of that. South Hunt's contributing part of it, as well as Wilco Hess's contributing part of it. We can forward it for motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Wilco Hess LLC and South Hunt Partners III for utility improvements along Highway 77 under a community development block grant.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Do they link to build any structures or they still provide utilities? Improving the utilities, they don't have plans for any stores of that nature.
Other than the Speedway gas station at this point, they don't have any other prospective people at this point, but what they're trying to do is make sure they have water and sewer available so that they can begin to market that property for manufacturing, industrial, or commercial. It's also zoned to the north of Blue Eye Heights that is multi-family residential R3 under current designation, so there could also be some houses developed that will be part of that 315 acres remaining. So, that gets us water and sewer on that side of the highway and gives us some more marketable property from that standpoint. Any other questions? All right, here and now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, see if I would say aye. All opposed. All right, the next item on the agenda is approve the extension of the existing agreement between Christian Associates for the master planning and designing services for most of the park and the city additional $30,001.00. That takes your total contract for 2,011 feet. I'll open the floor for a motion, a second, and we'll open it for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the extension of existing agreement with Christian Associates for the master planning and designing services for most of the park.
A second. Okay. I think that we had this discussion at the work session, but benefit of people that weren't there, we started this project with Christian Associates in 2012 to develop a master plan and brought the master plan to us. They presented a work session, the master plan, and exactly a full makeover of most of the park, building phases over probably depending on the funding available over the next five to 10 years to do that, so we developed a master plan, and this is actually to fund phase one, which fills in and does the demolition of the... This part, phase one, is the demolition of the current structures that are there, building backup of the playground. We do have a grant to cover some of the playground equipment, some of the other things that we're doing in that. We're not talking about that, but this is just the professional services part of this. But it's the survey and the civil engineering part of this, as well as the bid package and putting it out for bid, which will approve it in another future council meeting. The actual rating of the bids at that time, or the pricing is, our actual pricing, and then it'll be another council action to actually award the bid if we choose to do so. This is just the professional services part of that. Any other discussion or questions? All right, here and now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, see if I would say aye. All opposed. All right, that passes. The next item on the agenda is amend the FY 2015 budget to $4,500 for the following budget category, the purchase of new uniforms for the place of parking. Are you ready? Do you want to speak to that?
I think most of y'all were in the work session when I presented it from this far and hard these years, and they had already intended on switching to the more, back to the old school, traditional police uniforms next year. I've got officers now that need uniforms, and I've got a couple of slots that need to fill, and keep them wasting the money buying the old uniforms. I'm going to go ahead and do them now, do it all at the time.
Okay, now, let's discuss the work session. All right, forwards open for motion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the FY 2016 budget to $4,500 for the following budget category for the purchase of new uniforms in that police department.
A second. Any other discussion? Here and now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, see if I would say aye. All opposed. All right, reports from staff members, I know there's a couple that were delivered up here. Anybody have... Ms. Tomlin?
I just wanted to make sure that publicly, I thank Eastbrook Baptist Youth for coming out and helping at the senior center, as well as at England Park, Blue Eye Trail, they did some clearing, some painting, and we just appreciate the youth coming out. They wanted to give back to the community that they participated in with sports and all, so I just wanted to thank them, as well as Captain Vincent for coming out today and working with us with fire extinguishers, making sure that we were all knowledgeable of how to use one. First time I've ever used one, so I'll go back here and fire the bar. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other fire report? All right. My report is just to tell you just briefly that we had a bid open on fire station number two today. We did have three bidders out of the six that asked for plans. There is an apparent low bidder, what appears to be, you know, in the my opinion process, is an apparent low bidder until the architect goes through the entire bidding of those bids, but it does appear that the bids, all three bids, were very, very close together, and they all retained it in the budget that we presented to the council. So, I'll be getting back with each of the council members, you can give me that apparent low bid when it comes in from the architect's certified tabulation sheet, and then we can take that up at a upcoming meeting. The only other comment I wanted to say was I wanted to say thank you to those, some of you are in this audience, some of you tonight, but I wanted to say from my entire family, my appreciation and the sympathies and the sweet notes that was sent to me, I've been passing my mother, very touching, and I want to say thank you for that. And sorry I couldn't be at the last council meeting, but I spoke with my three sisters, and they certainly appreciate all the others who shared within that, so... All right, next item is to run the council reports. Who wants to start?
I agree with you, Mr. Brit. Okay, I do. We have an issue at the park on First Avenue. I was in conference with Robin, and she made me aware of some things that were going on down there, and I went down today, this afternoon, and while I was down there, two cars pulled up and they transacted, there was a drug deal, but whatever came out, it smelled like drugs. But anyway, we have been issued with them taking over, and from the neighbors that I talked to in the community near there, they said some uncle, they just, every day or so, that they're down there, and the children, he would park his car, and I abused the park because these older guys come down and they use profanity. While we were down there, while I was down there, I saw set dominoes on the table, and my daughter opened the container, she said, "That's meat in there." So, it's just, they're just down there, and they're bold with it, and I feel like we need to make it uncomfortable for them to be there in some way. There were two benches with a table, and I suggested if they can't stop, we remove the benches and tables, and I realized that that would hinder people from using it, but they're using it for the wrong use. And they saw a car park there, it didn't bother them, two cars pulled up, and they took care of what they came for. And I was about to call the police to come down there and just for my safety, because it was not comfortable, and I just feel like we just need to address it. And it has happened in that particular park before, and we're using all of Robin's workers to go down and clean up after they make a mess in the layer. I understand from another person that was coming, traveling through that Sunday, it was just beer bottles, beer cans, and just a whole lot of this, and we're using the people at the park to come down and clean up that park whereas they could be used for city work or whatever. So, it's just an issue that I feel like we need to address and do something about it. I don't know the solution, but my thing was take the benches out first for me, but we can't take the pavilion up because it's into the ground. And by the way, they took out bars and things that the wood chips that had been put around the trees, they took that. They're just vandalizing, and it's a bad thing.
Okay. Look, can I ask you, sitting on a committee, and Mr. Pearson, if you will, because you're adjacent to that, Chief, if you will, also let's agree a meeting, let's talk about from the standpoint of illegal activity going on down there, and then derive it, and you'll sit on that same thing as far as the park, what's going on as far as the park, see if we can address that and figure out a way to resolve that issue.
Let me ask Mayor, and I know you're one of the together to committee, and I'm not opposed to that at all, but in the meantime, is there any way, I would just like to ask, have the police been notified of this? Y'all know of the problem?
I talked to Robin, I was listening Monday morning about that incident.
Okay.
I did patrol there, that's not... That's not even a point.
You know, we spoke first Monday morning, now as far as being proactive as far as police patrol, what I want to try to do is figure out, do we want to look at additional security surveillance? Do we look at protecting park benches and pavilions? You know, what part of that do we do? I don't want to take anything away from a citizen that wants to use it by recent, and that's what I spoke to this Brit about earlier today, and so I share your concern, immediacy of that, and we jumped on that, but from the standpoint of city now, I'm trying to figure out a permanent solution. It tends to happen what, we put pressure, we go away, and there's somewhere else that they may figure, when we're not, when we turn our back and I look on it, I have a higher basis than they're at. Any other comments towards that?
Well, not really, but it's just one thing that I wanted to mention that I will be putting on, is put in our agenda next year to hire additional, you know, we get a hold of this, is hire additional people to do that for people to stay clean and for patrolling and that sort of thing, because we can't ask the police to be there all the time, but it would be kind of a thing to be there some of the time, a lot of the time, but in our budget next year, I think that's one thing that we need to push for, is additional police stations and things like that, because there's another part, and the other one is last, a couple of years ago, not last year, several years ago, they were at Handorf Park, so they rotate, so we just need to find a way to curb that activity.
That's the reason I want to put together a committee to look at that on long term. Short term, it's pretty obvious to me.
Right.
The long term is just what we need to look at and how we want to go back from that. Anything else, Mr. Brit?
That's all.
The only thing I'd like to say, it sort of goes along with what Ms. Brit was talking about, sorry, my senses are acting up, so I'm going to close up, is what it is. A lot of our areas and communities have neighborhood watch programs, some of them fell to the side, some of them are up and running good, but everybody that's in one or you know your area that you live in, if you see somebody down there doing something that they're not supposed to be doing, or somebody that's not supposed to be in that area, please do something about it. If you're in the neighborhood watch or not, you can pick up the phone and call somebody. Don't sit there and just let them do it. I mean, that's all of our responsibilities to each other. The community I live in is pretty easy to just drive around through, it's a big circle, but I mean, you know who comes through your area and your neighborhood, you know, and don't be afraid to call it in, because it might be your neighbor's house, we're two houses down, that they're stopping at, and there ain't nobody there, they're on vacation. We've actually had some incidents in the last couple of weeks that our police officers have caught people breaking into houses. A while ago, somebody called, and don't hesitate on calling, please call. Guys love to do their job and live, so don't help them.
I think... All right. I think that concludes our business. The forward open for motion.